Good evening. Oh, hold on. That's no, it's me. Good evening and welcome to the H U U S D Board Meeting for Wednesday, June 11th. It is 6:03, we're calling the meeting to order. It's our last meeting in this room for a few weeks, I know. Exciting. We are have someone here for public comment who is actually here to talk to us. She's not really here for public comment. She's here from our theater department to update us on the auditorium fundraising project, Molly Clark. So first, we have to do a couple of things, but then we're gonna do that. So first, I am, is there anyone in Zoom for public comment? All right, hi Lisa. Okay. So she doesn't have her hand up, so we will be not, we don't have anyone here for public comment. Do you have any? Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. Rebecca, do I have a second? Okay, Rob, all those in favor? Hi. Over there, and he's over here. Okay, agenda approved. The very first thing we're gonna do tonight is hear about the very exciting fundraising project going on in the theater department here at Harwood. This is Molly Clark is gonna talk to us about it and tell us what's going on. Thanks for joining us, Molly.
Thanks.
If you don't mind me adding a couple of comments before Molly talks. From my first year on, she's met with Molly and some other people have met with us to talk about the status of the Harwood, a bond, work that needs to be done in the auditorium because we have, as everyone knows, a phenomenal music department, a phenomenal theater department, and we have an auditorium that is probably one of the nicest high school auditorium spaces in the state, but it's in dire need of updating from sound, lighting, and even if you go backstage, you know, having recently done a high school renovation, the rigging system is very old and there's questions. So Lisa, Ray and I have met and after last year and the budget challenges and kind of the bond discussion stalling, Molly and some others, some parents, other teachers said, can we organize some work to raise money on our own because we are in dire need of updates to the auditorium? So back, I think it was the fall, early fall, we, I mentioned it to the board, the board gave a thumbs up on us, so they have been doing a tremendous amount of work. So I just wanted to recognize Molly, Brian, and all the parents who've been really working hard to make sure our students have good opportunities.
Come up with me. This is Sandra Haddock. She's one of our committee members and I just, Scott was going to be here with me tonight. Scott's the theater director and it's really he and I that have started this and Sandra is one of the parents who's on the committee with us. We have six, six parents, I think, ish. So we formed this committee. Well, let me give you a little background first. So if you would go to the next slide, I put together a little slideshow because who doesn't love a visual? I promise this is the wordiest slide. This is kind of just the overview that we have of the whole project. So we called it the Harwood Auditorium Revitalization Project, which is acronymed to HARP, which is just fun, it's music. And so we're seeking to transform our aging facility, as Dr. Mike mentioned, into a state of the art, fully equipped, vibrant, and safe auditorium that, I'm not gonna read this word for word because it's too wordy, but it has not been really renovated at all since 1997. I was born in 1993, so it's practically as old as I am, which is wild. And really before that, it was like the 70s that it was, was the major renovations and then there were some updates that were done in the 90, in the, in the late 90s. So with the urgency of all of these things growing and recognizing that there's lots of code issues in the space, Scott and I, after a couple of years of there being potential conversations around bonds happening, we decided that we, we recognized that was probably not gonna happen, given our budget circumstances right now, that we wanted to take matters into our own hands. So we reached out to parents and said, hey, would anybody like to join us in these efforts? And luckily, we do have a pretty solid group of parents who have put in a lot already. So we are hoping to buy 20, so a big package, over the next few years. We wanna buy wireless microphones, which are body mics, that's like the smallest thing that will be used in our theater productions. And then, as Mike was saying, upgrading our lighting system, all of the soft goods, which is the curtains, the stage curtains, and the fly system, so all of the rigging and the pulley system that goes to these large bars about 30 feet above the stage, and upgrading to a more modern and accessible audiovisual system, and I'll speak to that a little bit later, totaling an estimated budget of about $1.3 million, which is, that's a substantial amount of money, but it, it doesn't seem like it's impossible for us to get there. So if you would go to the next slide, please, Cindy. So just to give some background, so the pictures that you're seeing, I took just the other day, this is the rigging system that you're seeing, those pulleys. On the bottom picture, that is all of the weighted pulley system that brings curtains down and flies things into the air. That was deemed not up to code about 15 years ago. There was an evaluation done and it hasn't been up to code since, I imagine it was longer than that. And at that point, there were some things that were taken out. You used to be able to fly human beings from those things, and no longer, obviously. So our plan is to replace all of that rigging system with an automated system instead of pulleys. There's a couple of those pulleys that I have to use my entire body weight to get a curtain down because they're not rigged very well. And so we also need to update all of the curtains, as you'll see in a later slide, our curtains are in rough shape. They are tearing, they are stained, they are faded from the lights, just years and years of use on these pieces of cloth that hang from the ceiling. So those all need updating and they're very expensive. Like the main curtain is, I think it costs about 10 grand, just that one curtain is about $10,000. So they're, they're large pieces of material, so it makes sense. There's also lots of updates to our electrical system that need to be done. It's not up to code currently and wouldn't be sufficient if we were to upgrade to a newer lighting system. Has to do with the voltage and the wattage and I'm not sure of those details. And so our plan is to hopefully also update all of the old stage lighting, which all of those fixtures are individual fixtures that are set and have to be manually moved and repositioned for different shows. The only way to change color is to put a piece of plastic in front of them. And so we would hope to entirely replace the lighting fixtures with LED stage lights that would, they're, the current technology, they're significantly more efficient and would save the school so much money in electrical bills. Our current lighting system is incredibly inefficient, gets very hot, it's just, it's a poor use of electricity. And also, this new system would be more user friendly, so if somebody, an outside professional or an outside organization were to walk into our space, it'd be a lot easier for them to have some stage lighting than right now you have to be trained on our lighting system to know how to operate it. Far more. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're all like automated, they move on their own, and you can change colors and have different, like zoomed in and different shapes, it's really cool. LED lighting is amazing, where, where we've gone in the last 30 or 40 years since these have been updated is wild. And then also, so speaking of safety, there are two major safety concerns in our lighting and rigging system. Apart from the rigging itself, there's a catwalk that is above the auditorium seating where most of our lights are hung, and the only way to adjust those lights is actually go up there. And it, you have to go from the top floor of the school up an eight-foot vertical ladder and then climb onto this plank that is only, there's like some, some safety rails, sort of, but if you were to fall through, you were to fall through the roof of the auditorium. It's not up to code, it needs to be fixed. And there's no emergency lighting in the space, or there's one over one of the doors. So if there were an emergency and the power went out, or if the fire alarm goes off, those lights are supposed to come on automatically and we don't have that right now. Okay, Cindy, to the next slide, please. On this next slide, I just showed you some examples of the repair that's really needed of our curtain. The red stage curtain was ripped during our production this year. It like, was it dress rehearsal? I'm looking at Grady because he was the one that opened the curtain, and it's not your fault, Grady, it caught, it caught on our rigging system, which is too close, was, it was put up too close to the curtain, so when you open the curtain, it gets caught in the lights. Anyway, so dress rehearsal, before our musical, we had this massive, I mean, you can't really tell, but it's like this big, big old tear in this very expensive curtain. And then the next one, if you go to the next slide, Cindy, is, this is our cyclorama, it's the large canvas, piece of canvas at the back of the auditorium that we bring down and we use for projections. If you, if you were at the Sound of Music Musical a few years ago, we did, we used all of, we projected all of our scenes onto this. And so a cyclorama is really, it's very useful in a theater setting. We use it for all of our concerts, we project color and it brings just life to the, to the stage, and it's, it's just very old and also incredibly expensive. This is one of the more expensive things in the space because it's just one piece of continuous canvas, there's no seams. Okay, can you go to the next slide, please, Cindy? So the other piece of the auditorium that needs some dire updating is the audio and visual system. In a perfect world where we would end up with a new, fully integrated audiovisual system, we will get a new mixer and a stage box where the cabling, that if you've been in the auditorium recently, there's cabling that's run all the way like down the middle of the, of the seats, around, on the floor, all taped against the wall. We have conduits that are in the wall that were initially intended for all of that cabling to go through, and it hasn't been used in years since the more recent updates to the audio system. So all of that would be integrated into the space so that you wouldn't see all of the cabling going from the stage back to the, the board at the back of the room. We would permanently install an array of speakers. Right now, we just have these kind of temporary things that you would see at like an outdoor makeshift concert, just a couple PAs on, on sticks, that the arrays would go up and it would be multiple speakers, makes for a much better quality sound that would actually, like Dr. Mike said, we have this beautiful space, like architecturally, the space is very well done, but the speakers we have in there right now do not utilize the space acoustically very well. So this array would help with that. We would have an automatic microphone system so that if Dr. Mike walks in to do a presentation or, I don't know, Shannon's here to do a training for a specific group of teachers, I don't have to be the one, or Brian doesn't have to be the one as a specialist in the space to turn on a microphone. Anybody from our community, if we had a visiting partner could come in and turn on the microphone, turn on the lights, and it would just work. There's kind of, with this modern technology, there's two different modes, you're either in presenter mode or you're in theatrical mode. Theatrical mode is the more, has a little bit more flexibility and presenter mode is when it's just like, you need a microphone and you need the projector, that's it. That would just make the space way more accessible to our community and to people in this room and the school. Yeah. There have been a number of times that I've gotten calls from students or from Meg or from Erin DeZell, who's like, how do you turn it off again? I don't wanna mess it up because it is, it's kind of complicated right now. We would have a screen that would come down in front of the red curtain, we would have a projector from the back of the auditorium instead of on a cart in front of the, the stage. There's so many things that we can do to upgrade this space. And lastly, one of the things that the, we had a theater designer come and do a tour with Ray Dagel and myself last fall, and he did this whole evaluation of the space, which was really, really helpful, and one of the things he pointed out was we are not ADA compliant. In a theater like that, we need to have assisted listening system built in, which we don't have, and so that would be a big piece of it as well. And I already spoke to the wireless microphones. Cindy, the next slide is just an example of those array. If you see in the upper left and right corners, those are the speakers that are a little bit more state of the art and kind of, if you've, if you've been to Montpelier High School's auditorium in the last 10 years, four, five years, they have something like that, excuse me. Okay, so now, go ahead Cindy, projected costs. We, we got this evaluation from the designer that broke down a number of things and, which included some packages that were kind of a range of pricing. Granted, this was in the fall before, I imagine pricing is going to change, just given the current state of things. But we established these phases, these are kind of overestimating a little bit to build in some wiggle room, but we broke down the overall cost into multiple phases that we would roll out at different times. Our goal would be to start phase one, so to have $500,000 by, I think we said, summer 2026, which is maybe a little lofty, but it, that's where we're hoping to be. So hitting phase one by summer 2026, which would allow us to purchase those 20 microphones, which includes receivers and body microphones, and we actually have six already of those 20, so we only need four more, 14 more. The theater rigging and fly system, because that's the most urgent in terms of safety, and any electrical upgrades that need to be done to meet current code mandates. The theater rigging is really the most expensive piece of that, and we're, this is even kind of on the lower end of what we could do. There's some that are fully automated and they're really fancy, and we don't need to be that fancy, we just need it to be safe and operational. And then the next phase would be the lighting system overhaul, which would include a new lighting board and all new lights. Any rigging system that we'll get, so the, the actual bars and the kind of pulley to get the bars up and down, and the things that the curtains hang from, will work for any, any lighting fixtures that we get. They're all made the same way so that anything can be interchangeable. And then once we have the electrical upgrades, then it will be, the space will be essentially like ready to have new stuff, and we just need to then raise the money for the new stuff. And then the final phase, which is a little less urgent because it has, has less to do with code, less to do with efficiency, and really just like the quality of the space and the experience of being in that space and using it, would be the audiovisual overhaul. So these are our three spaces totaling in $1.3 million. And so I just wanna briefly go over kind of our fundraising plan, which is on our next slide. So we've, we've started with kind of grassroots fundraising, very minimal, honestly, for this spring. Scott and I both have full-time jobs and I'm on a nonprofit board for this other organization in Montpelier, and there are two people who are working full-time to raise about as much money as we are. And so it's been a lofty thing to try to tackle with two, with all of us have jobs and lives and we're trying to do this. So we've had pretty minor, small-scale fundraising that happened through the spring. We had a rose sale at the musical and we posted QR codes and, and then we had an art auction and a reception at the spring concert, but we've raised $11,000 already. And most of that, about nine of that was through private donors, just individual donors. I think we had, we had seven, I call them major donors, so people who've donated $1,000 plus that really just like, they handed me a check for $1,000, which was really wonderful. I haven't done any targeted stuff, any targeted asks yet. And we're planning some larger events for next year, but we know that events are not gonna get us to $1.3 million. So we've been doing some grant research and Ellen Kachera, who's another parent who's on the board, and Scott have been doing a lot of the, the grant writing and research for us. And then also next year, we're hoping to host some special, bigger events, potentially a gala, potentially a larger auction, hopefully getting Grace Potter involved. She's a person in our community who cares deeply about the theater arts and also would be a huge draw for our community. So yeah, those are our, oh, and I've missed the first one. Engaging large, large donors, which could include local, large businesses with connections to arts and Harwood community. People who would maybe be willing to give the larger tax deductible donations, and we've created to, I have these packets I could hand out later for more information, but kind of tiered sponsorship levels and naming rights. So naming rights to major parts of the renovation, whether it's you get a plaque next to the curtain because you gave us 15 grand, which allowed us to buy the curtain systems, or maybe even just one big name over the, over the auditorium. Doubtful. So can you go to the next slide, Cindy? So I spoke to this earlier, but we, we've raised about $11,000, nine of which came from seven individual donors, the rest was the various events that we had. And then we've used about 7,000 of that to purchase six of the 20 wireless microphones, and those six microphones were used in our musical this year. They cost about $1,000 apiece, which includes like the receiver and the mic and the face thing. And the Harwood Boosters have become wonderful partners because they have 501(c)(3) status that we can kind of exist under their umbrella, especially when it comes to tax deductible donations. So Sandra actually was working on a, a thank you letter that would go back to our donors that they would then bring to their accountants come tax season. And the Harwood Boosters has also allowed us access to their CheddarUp account, which is amazing. Their, their treasurer has been, any money that comes in through that, so we have access to a QR code that people can pay and donate online, which is really, as we know, just if it's easy, people will do it more. And then just a couple more slides, Cindy, one more. So I don't know, I imagine you all can see the impact that this would have on our community and our students. For our students to be able to experience performing and existing in a professional level theater really would have a greater impact than I think we could name. It would allow them to perform without any limitations and would help to foster these essential skills as they go on to potentially be professionals beyond high school. The impact on the community I could see being major. Currently, we have a handful of other organizations that use this space. We have a dance recital that's this weekend, I was just talking to Dr. Mike, there's a Broadway group that comes every summer, they have been using this space as their rain space for the last two years. It draws a huge crowd and they're like top-tier performers, they're all coming up from New York City and get, and come and sing in our auditorium, which is wild. And so if we had this state-of-the-art space, it would draw more and it would also potentially draw more revenue, rental revenue for the school, which would be awesome, but just to get our community in the building a little bit more in different ways, there's endless benefits to that. And then educationally, it would align with Harwood's dedication to arts education, inspiring future students and allowing teachers to innovate. If we have state-of-the-art equipment that we can teach with and teach on, then students are better prepared when they go into other spaces. They're like, oh, I understand how to utilize this because I used it in my high school auditorium. And then creating a lasting legacy for future generations, ensuring a fully functional, I'm gonna add, safe and inspiring performance space will have a massive effect on students to come. I wanna thank the Boosters for their ongoing support and willingness to help us, and especially thank you to Dr. Mike and Lisa and Meg and Ray for just being so open to this from the get-go. The minute I brought it up, they were like, yes, how can I help? And that has been, I can't thank you enough. It's been great to have you, you in our corner for this. That's it? Thanks, yeah. That's my spiel. I brought Sandra here as, as another person in case there's questions and she and I can answer any questions that you might have about the project.
Want to have a question? Rebecca?
Here is about your fundraising efforts and what pockets you guys have gotten into. Are you in the valley with like Mad River Valley Arts or some of the players there? There's done some fundraising, there's a lot of pockets. Maybe we can connect.
I would love to connect, yeah. Not a whole lot. I'll be totally transparent, that piece of it, the direct asks, is terrifying because I've never done any major fundraising before. I do have this little fun tidbit that I found when working with this other nonprofit, that you can find property values, which is a great way to find out who has the money. And that's all public access. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we have not, we, to answer your question a little bit more directly, we have not done a whole lot of deep dives into where the money is in our community. That's kind of, personally, that's my next step. And kind of, this first part of our process was really like creating the foundational work, so we needed a plan, we needed a budget, we needed to have some sort of vision of where we were gonna go before we took it to potential donors.
Yeah, it's M. Clark. Yeah. At H U U S D dot org.
That makes me think of the Sunshine Fund from Lawson's. Good, they're great. Wow, this is great. Any other questions?
So, excuse me, I don't have a question, it's more of a comment. I'm a little mind-blown to hear that there hasn't been a renovation since 1997. I remember, I was a student here in 1997, I remember how exciting that was. I am by no means a theater person, you don't want me on stage, you don't want me doing any of those things. I was, however, on stage crew. I did do stage crew for a musical, which I can't remember at the moment, but I think that that would be something that, as you are trying to go out and work on, you know, funding and fundraising, I think that's a really important thing to mention of being like, this place hasn't been updated since the 1900s, because I've also just learned that that's what you call the, you know, the 90s and the, and the olden days, but seriously, I mean, I think that that's something that's gonna be, you know, really impactful. Also, you know, our small community in Valley, we have, you know, we have Grace Potter, but there are others who have become successful in theater and different, you know, parts of the arts. This is something that is very important to the community, there's a lot of turnout. I live very close by, so I see how busy the parking lot is when there's musicals, when there's activities, when there's art shows. And so, you know, whatever anybody can do to try to emphasize and get the word out, you know, I think this is an incredible project. It is a little bit overwhelming just to hear all the things or, you know, and again, just even here, just that there are a number of safety violations that also prevent students from being able to excel in, 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 in the arts.
Sorry, Ben, to interrupt, I missed one really important one. We have a fire curtain that's hanging in the auditorium that's made of asbestos. And it's fine now, if you don't touch it, it's totally fine, but that's another thing that I meant to include in the safety, that if we touch it, which we will have to eventually, just don't touch it, it's okay. We will need asbestos abatement. It's literally fine, if you don't touch anything that's made of asbestos, like we don't, we don't move it, it doesn't come down, there's no harm, but we will eventually need to take it out of the space.
And go ahead.
Wow, it's tough to say something inspiring after that because actually that's now deeply frightening. Yeah, so, so actually the push really then is, we need to overhaul this and, and this isn't really so much a, an inspirational ask as much as it is, we need to be up to code, we need to make sure that the kids are safe, and we need to make sure that everybody is in a place where our children are able to express themselves, create a place where our children are able to express themselves creatively without the worry or burden of things that might actually do them real harm, we're not joking. So that's, wow, that just really affected me. Had no idea about that. What I was, on sort of an uplifting note, I was just thinking, you know, with all of this equipment going in, had you considered putting in, and I know this sounds fantasyful, but, but I'm actually being serious here, have you thought about putting in like a screen that could be used as like a movie screen? If only for the fact that as I'm, as I'm thinking about, and I kind of watched this with some of your band performances, previously you guys had done some, some movie performances and there was some projections in the back that, that I thought were really neat, but also it had me kind of thinking about all of the sound systems that you were doing. And it might be kind of neat to do sort of like community outreach kinds of things where, you know, a community movie day or something like that. Just having, having different ways to have the community access that space and enjoy that space to say, hey, this is what your tax money paid for, come and enjoy this, this is, this is for you, this is, this is what you helped to purchase and it's, it's for everyone's enjoyment. And, and, and that's just something that kind of popped off the, the top of my head. But yeah, that, that other thing is quite serious and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Other questions? Anybody? Pam? It was Wes. I was in Alice in Wonderland in the seventh grade on that stage and I was very proudly the dodo bird. It was a great moment, began and ended my theater career right there. Go ahead Pam.
I was never in the theater, but I support the theater and I know my like niece and nephew are getting ready to participate in all the theater that we have to offer here. So if I really want to donate now, where do I find the QR code? Who, how do I, like, where do I find the information so that I could actually make a donation?
We're trying to connect our theater, we have a Google Sites theater website to the Harwood website so that you would be able to access the theater website. And then on the theater website is a page about the fundraising. So it's kind of a long way there and maybe I can work with our tech folks about finding a better way for folks to access it. Maybe just write on our Harwood page because it's true, right now we don't really have an avenue, a quick way for folks to donate.
Was thinking the same thing, you know, I mean, there's, yeah, I mean, maybe we could do that. Any other questions? Anyone? Well, it's really exciting and we're really proud of you guys for taking this initiative and we will support it as best we can from here for sure. I mean, it's really, it's great. It's a really important facet of Harwood. In my whole life, it has been, always been like a shining light of what happens here. So, nice job.
And I'll send the board the link to the website.
Have a great night. Thank you. Okay, well, that is so exciting. They just, they're putting their head into it, doing it, love it. Okay, so moving on. Last meeting when we introduced our new student reps, I forgot to mention that Emma Aether is Ben Clark's stepdaughter. There we go. I just wanted to say that because I don't think the board needs that. So anyway, welcome to the board and here's everybody. And also, we want to recognize our new senior reps because now Grady and Cashel are the big guys on campus in this room anyway. I made cupcakes for that and they're full of coffee, so if you have one, you will be up late. Go ahead.
And I also want to thank Grady and Cashel because I think, I think they've mentioned since the board reorganized that this is all a student led process. So they take applications, they run the process, they make decisions, this is not, you know, the high school principal or myself or, you know, board leadership, but it's an entirely student led process and they do a really wonderful job. So just wanted to highlight that fact as well.
Okay, in the leadership report, I just want to point out that the Policy Governance Professional Development Session that we would like people to come to is going to be recorded. We understand that people have plans already and people are going to be away, but we'd love to get some participation. This teacher, this trainer is really bright and I think we have a lot, we can benefit a lot from a session with her, just to get our idea. I mean, we aren't making any choices about using this system. We are talking about getting introduced to this system to understand kind of what it looks like and if it might work for us. Because the people who use it, and there are lots of, not, I mean, I don't know the numbers, but there's quite a few districts in Vermont that use it and they feel like it's really effective. So I think the lady might even bring, could be bringing someone from another, from Winuski. She might bring a board member from Winuski to that session to help talk about how it, how they put it into action. So anyway, it will be recorded and I just want everyone to know that and hope that you will. If you don't get to be there, please watch it. And then let me just check out here, we have our retreat coming up on the 25th at the Mad River Barn at 5:30. It is a, our focus is to get to know each other, to relax, which we never get to do. It will be, it will be recorded by Mad River TV and it will be in Zoom and it will have an agenda, but all of those things are just to guide us through the night. And we're hoping to hear what our board members' cares are and what they're, what they feel like we should be leaning into in the coming year, or at least have our eyes on or are thinking about. So bring that with you in your mind, what do you, what's important to you about the coming year. Now, I think, Dr. Mike, do you have anything to add there?
This is not my written report, but it is the, we're into the last five days of school. And I know our students don't have a report tonight, but there have been a lot of wonderful student activities. There has been a big, there was a big game last night where our lacrosse boys are going to the state finals. Also had the, the, the end of year music program, senior recital, art show, which was phenomenal. I know some people were able to get up to see that, so a lot of good things happening. This, today, this morning, we had the Honor Society closing ceremony in this space where we, where the juniors recognized the seniors and then they announced the new officers. And I'm wondering if, you know, Cashel, do you remember who the new officers are for the National Honor Society? Grady, do you remember?
I was honored to accept the position of co-president, one of two. Thank you. Lissa Drymiller. And then Claire Pomer was the secretary, the writer, she, she writes for the Vermont, no, not the reporter, yeah. But it was great, we got to, like, we read like this closing poem and we each wrote a letter for one of the seniors, well, four letters, because there are only eight of us and there were like 30 of them. So, yeah, it was, it was a great morning.
Congratulations and number of other events. Friday is the start of what the school hopes is a new tradition. After, you know, some graduation work, getting their caps and gowns, the seniors are going to load a bus and visit each of the elementary schools and walk through the elementary schools. A number of other schools do that. That's been my experience with, with, you know, my previous high school and it's a very special event because not only have a remembrance for the senior being able to walk through their old elementary school, but also for the young students to be able to see the big seniors and also look ahead and use it as a teaching moment. So I think that's, it's a really neat idea. So that's going on. And then of course, Saturday is commencement and then next Wednesday is a half day and our final day of school. So a lot happening in this last week.
Are the seniors going to like their elementary school that they went to or are all the seniors going to each elementary school?
So they worked that out and Justine is the one who's kind of organized it and there's pros and cons to both. And one of the things that they talked about was, do we just want to say to the seniors, you can, here's the time for your elementary school. But it's a very close senior class and I wasn't involved in discussions, but they decided that they wanted to ride together. So they're going to get on a bus and we're going to take them to all the different elementary schools and I cleared out my morning, so I'm going to ride along with them. Yeah.
Little bit clumped here, this really, that's so touching. Yeah, that's really nice. I mean, so many of our kids have been in this school system since they were tiny. That's really great. Oh my God. It is a little, it's a very emotional time of year. That's every sixth grade graduate, the Warren one is just like that. Okay, thank you. Thanks for that little update. Now we're going to hear from our CFO. Your report.
So we, I want to update everybody on the bids. We went out to bid for our fuel, our oil, propane and wood chips. And then we also went out to bid for our TAN, which is our tax anticipation note. Bids were due on May 30th for the tax anticipation note. We invited four banks, M&amp;T, Union, Northfield and Community Bank, and we received three bids back. In my report, you'll see, you can actually click on each of the banks and you can see what they offered us. Community, Union Bank, M&amp;T, I'm sorry, M&amp;T Bank and Union Bank offered us two options, either a non revolving or a long-term loan. Looking at all the rates and comparing everything, Union, I'm recommending Union Bank, their rate is for option one, it is a fixed rate at 3.6. However, we will be receiving 4.0% interest on our sweep account. So we're borrowing $4 million, we use it over the summer to make our payroll and as taxes come in, we, then this money sits in a sweep account and we earn a higher interest. Overall, if we choose option one, we'll be earning $227,684,000 in revenue. So I'm recommending that we move forward with Union Bank. Revenue, $227,684 in revenue because it moves into a sweep account. For our oil and our propane bids, we went out and invited five vendors, we received three bids, Gillespie, Irving and Ward. You can see the cost of each of the bids for the, both the, the oil and the propane for, I also listed how much gallons for pre-buy for each of the schools, whether it be oil or propane. And if you click on each one of the links, it'll give you all the details as well. Overall, the best price we received for oil was Irving Oil at $239, which we need a total of 78,500 gallons, which would cost us $187,615 that we would be budgeting for. Gillespie for propane came in slightly under than Irving. We need to pre-purchase 3,000, 33,750 gallons of propane. Even though Irving is slightly higher, the overall net savings between propane and oil is a net savings of $9,650, $50.12. Plus current, our current vendor is Irving and we would have to change out a lot of the tanks. There are seven tanks that would have to be changed out, changed out. We own nine propane tanks. Those, we have nine propane tanks, we own only two and then the rest would have to be changed out and there could be a cost associated with that as well. So I'm recommending with the net savings to select Irving Oil. And the last bid was for wood chips for the high school. We invited four vendors, we received three bids and the best overall price at $74 per ton with an estimation budget, an estimated budget of $70,300 is Kuzno Forest Products. So I'm recommending that we select Kuzno. Any questions?
How many tons of wood chips?
950, we estimate. And we use about that every year. Just to let you know, I had budgeted, if we, between Irving and the wood chips, it would be over a $30,000 savings in our overall budget, from what I budgeted to what the actual bid prices came in at.
Doesn't seem to happen very often right now, so yay. Any more questions for Lisa? Steve? Accept these in the, accept Lisa's recommendations in the consent agenda so she can accept them in real life. Questions for Lisa? Okay.
One other thing, Ashley, so I'll let the banks know tonight, what the overall selection is, but there will be then a package, a bid package that will be sent out for all the board members to sign, in a docu-sign that would have to be done very quickly.
Does this go out to bid every year? How often do we do this? Okay.
So, so board members should check their email probably tomorrow. Lisa will send out the information and then you'll get that directly from, the docu-sign directly from the bank, if I remember correctly from last year.
Okay, next is board reports and we're going to hear from Steve Rosenberg from Public Outreach.
Committee met Monday night. JB joined us from Visioning and Building Committee because we want to discuss three main topics for the board. One is the TRUx report that'll come in maybe in September, the progress on the Ed Reform Bill, H454, and, I'm blanking on the third. Oh, the school budget, sorry, school budget for next year. And the theme of the meeting was, we want to get a little bit ahead of the curve this time around, so we're not in a position of just reacting to upset community members. So with that in mind, we prepared the press release that was sent around to discuss what's happening with TRUx Cullens and the issue of possible school consolidation within the district. and, uh, the issue of possible school consolidation within the district. Uh, we sent that to The Valley Reporter and Waterbury Roundabout and, uh, the press release was kind of met with confusion from the editors, uh, the two Lisas. I think because they felt, uh, press releases are supposed to have kind of accomplishments or facts in them and this was more of an update. So, uh, I think as a result, what we'd like to do with this is turn it into a letter from Ashley and Cindy to the papers that will appear next week as just kind of an update on where we stand, rather than some sort of pronouncement from the whole board.
They just didn't feel like it was a press release. And so the reason we will do it from Cindy and I is as this is our last meeting, we can't take, we can't work on something and then vote on it or pre-approve it or any of that. So we've kind of lost our window to do something from the whole board on this subject right now. The future is out there. We'll, we, we have more time. But Cindy and I are gonna work on something. Um, we will obviously share it with the board, but we will, um, sign our names to it. But it is pretty much that messaging in the press release and we're just gonna flesh it out a little bit more. So everyone will see it and it's just, and, and I apologize for the chaos of today. Um, you know, we have a lot of moving parts and, um, Public Outreach is like our, is such as, it's gonna be a really strong committee and this is sort of us sort of getting up to speed with how that's gonna work. So, thank you for your hard work on that. Everyone on that committee is great. We have some civilians on there, um, Shannon Convica, I think Dunphy Convica or something like that, and then Asher Berg, and they've been great. So, um, does every, anyone have any questions, Rebecca?
Yeah, a question, but just as we're moving forward, the distinction between a press release and a letter to the editor, um, it's super helpful that we're learning this and we'll just craft it differently next time. Yeah, not a loss at all, I don't think.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, okay, the next exciting part of this meeting, and I think we're on track, sort of, is to hear about the continuous improvement plans for school from Shannon Leslie.
Thank you. Um, if you could project the presentation that's linked into the agenda, that would be helpful. Sure. If it's also helpful, I can log into Zoom and project it. We could do it in reverse order, that would be fun. Yep, so this is the last slide. Yep, okay, great, thank you. Um, so, uh, I'm here, um, with my colleague Mandy as well to, uh, talk to you about our, uh, continuous improvement plans, um, which is something that is required by the Vermont Agency of Education of all schools. So since our district has seven schools, we have seven continuous improvement plans. Um, at the end of this presentation, I'm gonna help to answer the question, if we have seven different plans, how are they all connected together? And how do we move forward as under, as one district while each school has its own plan? Um, so I'll get the answer to that question. Um, so what is a CIP? So first of all, it's a document. Um, you can go to the next slide. Um, that serves as a roadmap for every school with the ultimate goal of helping to improve student achievement and well-being. Um, it's put together by school teams. So each of our team, each of our schools has a leadership team, which is comprised of the school administration and then a variety of other staff members, um, teachers, support staff. And they've been working together since about January, February of this year to draft their CIPs, um, that I will be submitting to the, uh, the Agency of Education on behalf of the schools. And really the CIP seeks to answer three questions, which are the three bullets at the bottom of the screen is how are our students doing? What do we need to do to help them thrive? And are, are efforts, in other words, are our strategies that we're implementing, are they making a difference and how do we know? So if you go to the next slide. Um, something that, uh, CIPs are connected to is a lot of statute both at the federal and the state level. Um, copies of the CIPs are all in the folder that you have linked in the agenda. It's also in the consent agenda. School CIPs will also be uploaded to each of their websites, um, after the board approves them. Um, but they're grounded in, um, first at the federal level, um, ESSA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. Those of you that have been in education for a while, this used to previously be known as the No Child Left Behind. Uh, this is just a, a, a new iteration of the same, um, elementary and secondary education laws that originated many, many decades ago. Um, EQS is our own state level quality standards, the education quality standards. And then there are a couple of, um, laws that the legislature has put forward over the past few years that also play a role in CIPs. And one of those is Act one seventy-three, which seeks to support struggling students and Act one thirty-nine, which seeks to bolster literacy achievement across the state. Um, there are links to each of these in, uh, this slide. So if you want to do a deeper dive into the background information of all of them, you can, um, click on those, um, when you find the time. And then also title funding. Um, I with, along with Lisa, I help Lisa manage, um, our, what are called Title One, Title Two and Title Four grants. And all of those monies can be directed toward, um, strategies, professional development, supports for students, all in the name of increasing student achievement and helping kids feel, um, safe and welcome at school. And then what I would call wrapping around all of that, which Mandy is basically hired to do, this is her job, um, is our multi-tiered system of support. So these are, if you walk into a school building, it's all of the things that are in place within the school day to recognize students who are excelling, who are on grade level and who are below grade level. And what does the school have in place to help all three of those levels of achievers? Um, and so, uh, every school's CIP is grounded within the systems that they already have in place and many of their goals are targeted at improving the systems that they have in place, um, especially building off of their strengths where they've seen success. Next slide, please. So each of our schools has a minimum of two goals. Um, many of our schools have more than two. Um, but the state requirement is you have to have a goal related to academ, improving academic achievement and that's very broad. Um, and you also have to have a goal related, um, to safe and healthy schools. And this can be targeted at social emotional learning. It can be, um, improving school climate. It can be looking at school safety. Um, it could be as simple as ensuring that any student who walks through the halls has a feeling of belonging. And how do you cultivate that, um, environment within your building? Next slide. So these are some cut and paste examples of goals that, uh, our schools have. And what I also want to mention here is that there's a process that schools follow to derive these goals. The first step is to answer that question, how are our students doing? And so, as I mentioned, since about January, February, each of our buildings have been doing deep dives into our student achievement data as well as, um, other data such as DESA, which is, um, our assessment that looks at, um, student social emotional learning. Um, and there's a lot of standards related to that such as, um, like responsible decision-making, self-awareness, um, things like that. And there's other types of data. We look at, they look at behavior data, they look at attendance trends. Um, they look at surveys, both given to staff and students about the things that are happening within their building. And so these leadership teams in each of our schools compile all of this data and then they step back and they ask themselves, what is the data telling us that our students need? And what is the data telling us that our staff needs? Cause sometimes goals are related to professional development, identifying, um, trainings that need to happen for staff. And so once all that data is analyzed and you identify needs, then you come up with goals. And as mentioned, uh, an academic related goal and a safe and healthy schools related goal. And then you list the action steps that you're going to take, uh, throughout the coming year to achieve that goal. And so throughout next, these plans that, um, you're hopefully going to approve tonight are all, um, school improved, continuous improvement plans beginning next year. So starting in August, um, with the first day of school, um, schools will be putting these plans into place. And then they'll be spending, um, throughout next year, they'll be progress monitoring their strategies and, uh, revisiting those metrics that they collected originally to ask the question, how are our students doing? So we're gonna continue to look at, um, our VT cap data, our STAR three sixty data, our DIBLs data, our DESA data. The words that I'm saying right now are all assessments that we use throughout the district to measure student achievement and well-being. And finally, the last slide is the answer to the question, well, if each individual school is, um, coming up with its own, uh, continuous improvement plan, does that mean that all of our schools are kind of splintering off in different directions? And see, the answer to that is no. We met as a leader, as an admin team, once, um, everyone had their draft goals in place and we did some mapping and they are all very similar. All of our buildings want to improve student achievement in math and reading. And we are all using the same baseline data to begin those conversations. Each school might identify slightly different strategies that they're going to enact and that's based on the school structure, the school culture, uh, the size of the building, the number of staff that they have, their MTSS systems that they have in place, things like that. But we're, we're, all of our goals are very, very common. Our safe and healthy school goals that the majority of our schools have is, um, related to student behavior and helping students to learn the skills that they need to improve, uh, what we call, especially here at Harwood, um, in this building, self-direction. And how do we help support their growth in the skills related to self-direction? Um, and we're gonna, uh, as a, that, sort of the central office admin team, uh, Mike, Lisa, Mandy, John Berlinner, who's not here tonight and myself, we're all here to support the schools, um, in their, um, carrying out of their goals. And we plan to have lots of conversations throughout our admin team meetings next year, um, helping to support each other. And build PD, um, around our common goals. So we'll be developing, um, beginning, we have a one-day admin team. We call it a retreat, which is kind of funny because many of our principals joke that it's really just a full-day meeting because we generally do it here. It's not really a retreat. Um, but we have a full-day, uh, meeting on June twenty-fifth and then we have a two-day meeting in August and we will be spending all three of those days diving into the CIPs and preparing for their execution for next year. And then also looking at our in-service calendar and based on those common goals and themes, identifying what district-wide professional development we can, um, offer on those days that will, um, that will help everybody across the district.
And I would just add about the retreat. Uh, we normally have it here, this year we decided to do something special. Uh, I was at an event at, uh, the son of a board member here, Sam Rosenberg, who owns the local, and they have a really beautiful event space. So we're gonna meet in their event space, but I will say if you hear that the administrators are at the local during the day, it is coffee and, and juice and tea. There, there is nothing else during the school day, so.
I'm just gonna say this is really exciting because, um, in my, this is still a new role for me, but Shannon and I worked on a district-wide, we call it the SIP plan. So if you hear SIP, that's what we're talking about is this. Um, and so to have it be expanded to each school, wrote their own plan, I think the principals were a little, um, they were like, oh, we have to write our own plan. Okay, great. Um, but I think that, I was pleasantly surprised to see how much in common we were able to come up with, even though each building did their own work and how that's gonna really fuel so much of the work that we're gonna do together, so.
Hello. I spent some time this afternoon looking at the consent agenda and then have the CIP in that, which is broken out by all the schools, actually, and was, spend a lot of time reading some of that. It's really quite complex and I thought it was very interesting. I was curious about kind of trying to compare on my own what was different in some of the schools and I couldn't really do that, but, um, I, I imagine that it's quite, it's quite a challenge for you guys in the administrative position to kind of pull that, that, the one that said cohesive on, on your slide up there. It just, I was just curious how you were all managing that and I'm interested to hear about it. Thank you.
Um, I think like a simple answer to that is, um, as Mandy mentioned, this, so the history behind the CIP is, um, we submit, we, in the past, um, prior to this year, we submitted one CIP on behalf of the whole district. Um, this year, due to federal monitoring of the Agency of Education, um, the agency said we have to have each school submit their own plan because it's in alignment with our state plan and what the feds are looking for. Um, so we had a very different process in the past. We worked as an entire admin team on behalf of the whole district to identify, to look at the data, identify our goals and agree that the goals that we have are, are goals that each school would commit to. And then back in their buildings, the strategies that they would implement to meet the goals, that's where you would get a little bit of nuance and a little bit of flexibility. Um, this time around, I think they are common because of the way we had done it in the past and that they're also, that they have to be, you have to have one goal related to academics and you have to have a goal related to, um, safe and healthy schools. And I think just by the nature of our collaborative work in the past, led them to having goals that look very, very similar. I also worked with each building individually, um, meeting one-on-one with them and I went to, um, quite a few, actually, their leadership team meetings as sort of a person who could help facilitate the process. And, um, and Mandy was involved in a lot of that work as well. So I think having us sitting at the table of the individual schools also helped to ensure that we're all on the same page.
Just wanna add, and I know Pam, you have a question, I'm not, I'm not, um, is one thing that's much easier this year to, even though we had to do seven CIPs, is that all of our, almost all of our data is housed in one place now. Um, when I came onto this job, Shannon had done the legwork to get, um, an MTSS platform that we use. And so just about all the data that we had to look at was in the same place and we're using common tools, which helps us look at things in a similar way instead of, um, and so I think that really helped as well because you only had to open up one site to see most of the data that you needed to, to do a data inventory or analysis, right? So we were not comparing apples to oranges, we were comparing apples to apples.
Yeah, I had actually two questions. Um, one, I was looking at some of the CIP plans and some of Brookside, um, in particular, and some of the goals are to meet expectations and meet is in quotation marks. And so I was kind of wondering, what does that actually mean when the goal has quotation marks in it? And then the second part of the question is, how do we know if we've met these goals? What goes on? What goes on later in the year, next year? How do we track this?
As I know, that's such a great question. So the plans aren't perfect yet. This is their first sort of iteration. And if you actually, in every plan, if you go to the last page, it's a progress monitoring chart where they list the number of each goal and then they put what's called baseline data. And so you'll see in Brookside's, they have, for each grade level, they have certain student achievement numbers and their percentages of kids who are proficient on a certain assessment. That's the baseline data that we're going to be using to compare next year. And one thing that branching minds has the ability, that's the system that Mandy was referring to, has ability to do is sometimes you have to be careful of what data you're looking at, that this year's third grade might be different than next year's third grade because it's a different cohort of kids. But branching minds has the ability to follow cohorts. So the data that is in everyone's plans at that final page, the baseline data that's there now, it'll say like kindergarten, this percentage, first grade, this percentage. We'll know that this coming year, that kindergarten is actually grade one because that data is this year's data. So we'll be able to follow those kindergartners into first grade and then they'll be taking, say, the dibbles again. And we'll be able to see how much they've grown based on the strategies that we've implemented. And then you had a second question?
What if we come back and we have done all these reassessments and they haven't met them? What do we do then?
So the, there's a common phrase called plan, do, study, act. That is sort of the steps of the continuous improvement process. And so it's a cycle. And if we do discover that kids are not achieving, they're not making the gains that we wanted to see within our goals, then we know we have to adjust our strategies. So the strategies that we implement are not static. And they also, honestly, sometimes they take a couple of years. It's not like, there are some things that you can do that you can have almost instant success with, but there are other strategies that take time to implement. And that could be due to a variety of things. And so we may see in some of our assessments, some growth, but we may not see that growth for some time.
One of the important things is that by drafting these, we're prioritizing the things that are here in these plans. And so it's not that the other things won't time and attention, they will, but we only have a finite amount of time to do the things. And so this is just putting those things at the forefront of the conversations that we have as a team, as the training that provide our teachers and the things that we are progress monitoring because we can't progress monitor everything. So this is just bringing it right to the front so that we're making sure these are the things that we're checking on, on the regular.
Shannon, that was a great presentation. I've like dived in this stuff before and without that kind of clarity, it is really complicated, especially with all those different things that are, all the different laws, et cetera, that feed into it. So thank you for that. And when you're mentioning all of the data sets to look at, the youth behavior risk survey, wasn't mentioned, and I don't see anything in any of this, the plans related to that, is that not a place for this?
It is something that we do look at, but as Mandy mentioned, it's, it wasn't, it's, it is a priority and it actually is being talked about outside of the CIP. Actually, our SHAC committee is going to be taking a look at that. I do want to mention though, that one thing that we, and we've given the AOE feedback on, is that the YRBS, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, comes out every two years. And so by the time, and then it takes another year for like the data to come out. And so by the time the data comes out, the students who took it at that time, two years ago, it's kind of outdated. So you have to look at it just sort of like as a stamp in time. And maybe it is telling something about your system. So that's kind of, that's one issue we have with the YRBS. But we also have like, we have another tool called the DESA, which is administered K through 12. And actually, at the middle and high school levels, there's a student self-assessment that they take. And it doesn't necessarily target risky behaviors, but it does target things about how like, how students feel about themselves, how they feel about their abilities, things like that. And that gives us really good data as well. And there's a correlation between, you know, how students feel about themselves and, you know, the activities that they engage in. So we do look at that as well.
Quickly, what's the SHAC?
School advisory committee, the school health, Ben is the SHAC.
I would like to comment on the fact that I am not the SHAC. I've never been a SHAC. That is all.
The youth behavior risk survey is not as actionable, though it is absolutely part of the data we look at. When we did a data inventory, we could find data, I mean, enough data to like put yourself to sleep at night, but we had to pick the things that we thought were actionable and that we could use for progress monitoring, which are usually things that are administered multiple times a year, not every two years. And so there are many great tools out there. We had to prioritize the ones that we would have access to on a regular basis so we could measure our movement and progress.
At Harwood started a couple of years ago, its own student climate survey. It's a senior, I think it's a senior survey that they give out every year. And that gives us really good information as well.
Thanks, I think this is great. I love this kind of stuff. As a non-expert, one of the things that struck me was how aggressive some of the goals are. Like for instance, not to pick on Brookside, but the fourth grade VT cap math was like forty-two percent, I think, this year and the target sixty percent in one year. Are you concerned at all that they're set up to fail?
I think that the goal that they set could be achievable. I don't know if it, like I was mentioning earlier, I don't know if it could be achievable in one year, but these can be multi-year goals. They may discover that when VT cap, that was just administered this past spring, when those scores come out later this year, when the AOE releases them, they'll be able to do another compared, they'll be able to do another analysis and compare how that cohort did. And they may have to adjust that. But I think it's okay to be, we want, we want to set lofty goals because then it's going to, I think it's going to put into place kind of a sense of urgency and, and it's going to force us to be really deliberate about what we do to help students get to where they need to be. It just kind of, it's that extra kind of push.
Good question. And I always tell principals and others that, you know, we wriggles with a word processor or now Google Docs and not in stone. And I would rather have people have stretched goals than, and really have to work to get to them and maybe not get to them in the first year or second year or third year. So, so I think that's, I think that's a similar philosophy that most of our principals have as well.
Last year, at one of these meetings, I can't remember which board member, but somebody suggested maybe a common set of metrics that we could use to see how our district is performing academically against other districts. Is this something that kind of be turned into that in the future?
It's tricky to do. You can do it with our state-level assessments. There's actually a database right now on the AOE website that you can go in and you can look at VT cap scores from two thousand and twenty-four. And then it'll, and you can look up any school that you want, any grade level, math, reading and science. So at that state level, we can do that. Our students every year typically perform, and then it also, if you look at Harwood-specific schools, it'll tell you how that school performed compared to the state. And our schools generally perform many percentage points above the state average. Our own, we have many internal district, like what we call local assessments. One of our major local assessments is called star three sixty. Not, our neighboring districts don't do star three sixty. There's another district who does another one called iReady. There's another one called this, there's another one called that. So there's many products out there that will measure math and reading achievement. And we just happen to have selected star three sixty. So doing that kind of apples-to-apples comparison is really tricky.
I have one question with all of these initial things. I don't know what dibbel, D-I-B-E-L, stands for and would like to know that.
I have to admit, Cindy, sometimes I forget to, it's the Deveraux Index of something, something. We call it dibbles. Yep.
It's an early literacy screening.
Yep, it's a screening tool that measures phonemic awareness, decoding, vocabulary, comprehension, all that stuff. Oh, there it is. Sorry, the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills.
And it's a good assessment for kids because it's a very, if you have a team doing the assessments, it can occur pretty quickly. And then you can take, it's kind of like, you stick to measure how students are progressing throughout the good assessments. There's design instruction, specialized instruction for literacy. And it's widely, it's a national assessment that's used pretty widely. I used it before.
Do you have, oh, Emily, go ahead. Just looking for, I guess, clarification. So the, the CIPs, this is something at the federal level recommendation. And then we also have the state-level recommendations as well. And I know they do the testing with the S-BAX. So it's like this, so this is like another layer to that being added for tracking educational success in the schools. I'll kind of maybe explain it like this. So the feds demand every state have a education plan. And that plan has to have a certain number of things in it. So the state of Vermont has its own plan. And within that plan is the requirement to have all schools have a continuous improvement plan. What is in the continuous improvement plan qualifies you to receive federal funding. It's a requirement for federal funding. So it's kind of, it's a little bit of a tiered system, but it's also a little bit of like a mashed-together system. But the CIP is kind of at the center of helping to meet state and federal level compliance measures. So it's, it's our state's version of creating one document that has all these different element, that are, has required elements in it. You'll notice if you looked at the CIPs, they all look the same in terms of structure. Yeah, yep, yep. And at the very first page, there's these boxes that you have to check. Those are all both federal and state compliance measures.
And it's really, really good question. And, you know, it's kind of mirroring what's the debate at our federal level right now with what role does the federal government have? And education is a state-level right. The federal government has no ability to dictate curriculum, other things. What they do have historically for the last sixty or so years is money, like title, federal tiny little tail one money, national school lunch money, special ed money. So what they do is they say, you know, what they did especially during early two thousands, No Child Left Behind, is here's some standards we want you to meet as states, as a country. And we can't make you do these things, but we can say, if you don't do them, we're going to take your way, your federal funding. So that's why the state has them. But in Vermont, we're a very local, as again, the debate currently in Vermont, we're a very locally controlled state. So I was just, Steve shared some information from, on math with Shannon and I earlier today. And Vermont does not have, it's been different for me because Vermont does not have overall guidance with here's the kind of, we have general standards, but not what those standards drill down as and not things like what they do in New York where they have national or statewide curriculum. So we're a very locally controlled state, which makes some of the challenges, especially when you're looking at statewide assessments that have just changed two years ago, somewhat challenging. So that's why I think the goals are helpful. And this is the kind of conversation that, that we think is a really good board conversation that will be a good segue eventually into our next topic.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Shannon and Mandy. This is like heavy material. I'm glad it's your job, not my job. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to just an introduction to that policy governance framework we floated out in an email this week. It is a, it is a, it would be considered PD even, I think, even if we don't adopt it, right? We would learn a ton. And Dr. Mike knows more about it than me, so he's going to talk about it a little bit.
I wouldn't say I know more about it, but Cindy, Ashley and I have been talking a lot about the next year as we've been talking about the retreat and some things that the board can do for professional development. And part of this conversation came out of something that I've mentioned before. I was, I started July, I'm going to my fourth year, I was hired July, or February twenty twenty-two, started in July. And of the board, the fourteen board members who voted to hire me just a little over three years ago, the only two that remain are Jonathan and Cindy. So the board has had a lot of change. So as, as we were talking about professional development, the next year, what are some things that we could do to be a more effective team of fifteen? You have the fourteen board members and the superintendent. And just from talking to some other superintendents that I got to know, some other school board members across the state, some people have recommended the policy governance framework because the board's, you know, primary mission really is to develop policy. So as, as I was thinking about how the three of us could share a little bit more about our ideas and we can talk about this, I think we're planning to talk about it a little more at the retreat and in that training. One of the things I share is, because it's a good example, we all went to school. So we all have some knowledge of what schools are. But a number of years ago, I was on the board of a, you know, private local counseling center, the Samaritan Counseling Center of Lancaster. And I spent two years as the board chair. And I am not a professional counselor. I've worked with counselors, but I don't know anything about it. My job as a board member of that private counseling firm was to really develop policies for the functioning of the business side. You know, I didn't get involved in, you know, what, what different therapies are used or what the philosophies are of the counselors. That was not my role. My role really was to help with other board members to run the, the counseling centers that we were able to provide good public service for the people who came to us as clients. So this is something else I've found that I think also gives kind of a good illustration of the importance of the different roles we have. And I think this conversation that we just had on the SIP plans is the perfect illustration of the kinds of questions and guidance that is helpful from the board. So this is, this is one, just using kind of a clock with, you know, the minute hand and the hour hand is an example of, you know, the board's domain is in kind of the top of the clock when you see a need. So the example I like to give was the first need I was charged with, the superintendent by the board, and that's around this time is when we were approached three years ago when the board was, I had not started yet, about the topic of restraint and seclusion, that our numbers were really high. So there was a lot of discussion in the community. It was a charged topic. First couple of weeks, couple of months, pretty much most of the year working on in conjunction with other principals. And what the board said is, we have a need, we have a need to fix something. So we need to take a look, we need to look at the data, which we did. And then we need to enact, look at our policy and enact a policy. And that's something that Ashley was a board member, Cindy was a board member, they were on the committee and we worked together to do that. So the board eventually through that year developed a policy, a revised policy and said, okay, administration, now it's your turn to go ahead and implement policy. So we implemented the policy, we did trainings, we worked with staff, we evaluated the policy and we continue to do that even because it was such a big policy, looking at the services we're providing students and the need. And, and so when we come, bring back that information, that's for the board to say, is this working or isn't it? And if it's working, then we consider the evaluation. We modify the policy, end it, so that that continues to go around in that cycle of kind of division of labor of, of what we do as a board and as a superintendent and administration. So as we were talking, we thought that that would be maybe a good area to dive in on to be a more effective team. to be a more effective team and to make sure that we're providing the best education. So that's kind of how this has come about. We linked some information specifically about that. We had a meeting, actually, not surprisingly, when we got on the call, Ashley, Cindy and I with the trainer, her name's Elaine, and, I'm sorry, Jeannie, Jeannie. I was thinking of an Elaine that I know, but Jeannie. And Cindy's like, I knew, I know you. We worked together, you know, twenty-five years ago.
The administrative team with her here.
Yes. So she's retired and she's a trainer now. And, and she speaks highly and kind of emphasized that there's a series, there's a process and a series to learn about it. And even if you don't adopt it, the process of learning about kind of that, the policy governance framework can be a benefit to everyone else. So we just thought that would probably be going into what can be some challenging years ahead, a good process to go over from a professional development point of view that would hopefully, with the goal of enhancing our effectiveness as a school district. Is that Cindy?
Just, I was just saying that, you know, enhancing our role, our work and role as, as a school board. And what really are, you know, it came up a little bit last, at our last meeting when we talked about, well, what is local control really? And we got talking about that. And then what is our role as a school board around the issue of local control? You know, what should we be doing? And I think someone else brought up curriculum on something. They'd send us Ben or Dan, I don't remember, one of you did. So to help sort out, what is our role as a school board in managing all these essential pieces of education? And then how do we then work with the administration, primarily the superintendent, but the rest of the administration, to be sure we're implementing the policies that we've worked on from the information they gave us? So it's, that's your cyclical piece, I guess.
And it also gets kind of challenging too, because some people, Rebecca brought up some good questions last time about clearances. And, and in some of the policies that, that the board interacts and that the administration has to implement are very driven by state statutes so that, so that there's less flexibility and more regulation that has to be fulfilled. Another thing I think of is, you know, we talked a little bit about special education. That's another area where even kind of administration and teachers, there's a lot of govern, activities governed by federal law, policy that, that we have very limited flexibility on as well. So I think just understanding all those nuances and finding out where we have the flexibility and where we don't, then with those areas of greater flexibility where the board really wants to focus. Because I was having a conversation with someone else about, you know, a teacher, about curriculum and things that we can do. And we, with a high school of five hundred, we have more limited ability than we would if we had a high school of two thousand. And a high school of five hundred in Vermont has, is on a larger size, on the upper half. And we have more flexibility on curriculum offerings than we would if we were a high school like some places have of a hundred or two hundred. So there's just a lot of nuance. And we just thought that, you know, even taking a step back and looking at that would be just a good conversation for the board, especially since we have a lot of new board members on as well.
My very favorite example of the role of the school board and policy and the administration and procedures occurred during my first year on this board while I was with Life Legaros. And we were both really concerned about COVID and what we were doing in our school system about COVID and what our procedures were and how we were dealing with them. And that we needed some kind of a policy about COVID. And it was like, I said, yeah, but you know, we have to be careful because what we really need is a policy about how we handle communicable diseases in schools, not specifically COVID. We had at that time a policy on head lice checks. Now, it was, it was there and it was in our policy manual, had been for a long time. And it really was a procedure for how we deal with communicable diseases in the school system. So the policy is that broad, you know, general understanding of what it is that we need to be paying attention to. And then these guys get to set up, get to develop the procedures that help with the implementation of that policy. And beginning to understand how we split those around, to me, is, is one of the key things about board membership. It's that thirty thousand-foot view, you know? We're supposed to be up here thinking about policy. And this, the woman is very charismatic, this trainer. And she, she was able to really kind of explain it, why they are so, they are so into it and why it works really well. And it's a top-down governance, which is kind of what we do here, but it's doing it a little differently and a little bit more directly. So, go ahead.
Examples of like, if we were going to move in this direction, I know there's a whole bunch of training, but what's, like, what kind of topic would we be taking on, making a policy on, and then it being impactful?
Like, in reading it, it's, it is basically, we're setting goals for the administration and the staff and teachers that we set and then they work toward. It's kind of like cart before the horse. Instead of managing the whole business as if it's a business while we all sit here and troubleshoot things that come up, it's kind of done in advance, right? And you, you have more, we would have more lead-in information. We would set our own goals that we would want them to achieve and they would work towards achieving it.
And that's kind of the process I brought with me, that it's a different framework, but that's why I've always encouraged the board to kind of, I propose goals and then we revise them and have some discussion. And it's just more of a formalization of that process that then goes into the evaluation process.
And she did say that you like, it's, you're, you're all in or not. Like, we either adopt that as our way of doing it or we don't because you can't dabble. It's kind of a very specific way to handle things. So it's really just exploration for this group in one way. I mean, if we choose to adopt it, that would be, we'll see. I mean, I don't know. So, but it is super interesting and it is appearing to be quite effective. So if you can't make it to it on the seventeenth, please watch it. Okay, that brings us to our almost executive session. We have one last thing to do, and that is the consent agenda. That includes authorizing payroll board, to authorize payroll board orders in accordance with FY twenty-four employee, why FY twenty-four? Employee contracts and letters of employment. Is that supposed to be twenty-five?
Yes, it should be, actually, it should be.
Twenty-six. Yeah, that date is wrong. I want to change that. Sorry. Authorize payroll board orders in accordance with FY twenty-six, employee contracts and letters of employment. Second is to approve Lisa's tax anticipation note, the TAN approval. That's where we make a little money off the giving and getting of money to run the school over the summer. Propane, oil, and wood chip bid approvals. You've heard her recommendations in approving this consent agenda. You're approving those recommendations. We're going to approve the HUSD twenty-five, twenty-six CIPs from Shannon and Mandy. What they described is what you are approving. We're going to authorize Dr. Mike as the CEO of the HUSD to accept and administer all federal and state grants in the coming year. And we are also going to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Denmark field trip request. Are there any questions on any of that? That is a lot, just in case. If there are no questions, I'd like a motion to approve. You have a question? Go ahead.
I just had a quick question on the authorizing the superintendent to accept and administrate all federal and state grants. Is that something we normally do? Is that just procedural? Okay.
That's a motion that has to be passed every year so that I can approve the grants. And we do those on a pretty regular basis. That's another area. Shannon wears many hats and she handles a lot of the management of the grants. And then I have to go in, they actually go from, many cases go from Shannon to Lisa, who has to take a look at the fiscal pieces of it. And then the electronic, it comes to me. I have to review them, agree to some things, and then submit them to the Agency of Education.
I just didn't want to miss a grant that we had applied for and gotten.
All right. If everyone is on board, I'd like a motion to accept the consent agenda. Rebecca, do I have a second? Emily? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. There are no nays. Jonathan, in Zoom, are you an aye? Hearing me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I couldn't get the button.
That's okay. Thank you so much. Okay. That, all right, so that consent agenda will pass. The next piece is our executive session, which means our students can go, for one thing.
And I do, we do have to make a motion. And I have a motion if somebody, if there's somebody who would like to read it, I can give you the motion.
Oh, is it not this?
No, it's an actual motion.
Who can make this?
I'll read it.
Okay. Ben would like to, Ben's going to make a motion to go into executive session. Thanks, kids. I mean, young adults. I mean, students.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, kids.
Really do.
You're not going to wet.
I'll see you.
I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee provided that the public body shall make a final decision to hire or appoint a public officer or employee in an open meeting and shall explain the reasons for its final decision during the open meeting. Also, the subscript as well?
Sure. Well, you can do that.
Okay. The purpose of this agenda item is to enter into a closed session of the body in order to discuss a matter that falls under the narrowly defined scope as governed by one VSA three, one, three.
I have a second. Pam seconds. All those in favor of heading into executive session, say aye. Aye. All right. I do, Dr. Mike's going to stay for the beginning and then he's going to go. So Curtis, set us up, please.